Really cute. So little, how old is it? Oh, so, oh, it's a real baby, we just got it.
I love the polling. Yeah, she got, after the ceremony, she gave a foul. Yeah, it was too long to leave her, so I was like, oh, what can she hear? Yeah, she's not quite, like, she doesn't fight right yet, but she's finally settled down.
We don't know if it was a full car, all its girls, you know, like. I actually can't even still know. Sunday to Monday, this is. I don't really, I can be relaxed then. Oh, hold on, she's trying to talk, let's see. Still working on it back there.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 12th Select Board meeting. We are now back in regular session, and I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
We're gonna start tonight with public comment, is there anybody there for public comment?
Madam Chair, may I just move out of order some, a selectmen's comment, just because I wanna catch people 'cause it's early in the evening versus the end of the evening, do you, are you alright with that, to make a couple of comments on some upcoming issues? I don't know which way to look at you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, the first one.
Can you put the microphone a little closer to you?
Sure, so, the first one, because it is actually tour time sensitive, that we are still getting estimates on, on wreaths, and I think it's a little bit having to do with the supply chain, that they just don't have everything in there, they would, the company that we usually use are, you know, working with people in Canada, so it will not be in your tax bill, October 1st, which it's been for years, so we'll get the message out online, on the website, and so forth and so on, so if you don't see it, it's because we just don't have enough information, other than we will still be doing it, so that's issue number one. And the other thing, too, the North End Women's Club is working with the fire department in having a course on Wednesday at 6 o'clock on the new CPR training, which is hands only, so if anybody is interested in doing that, and that's, again, the reason that I asked for this privilege, is just if they could call me, you could get the numbers off websites and things like that, just to book it, the space is limited, but if it, if it's a big success, we'll try to book others, so we're very excited about that, because I think the old method just isn't going to work for people with COVID and everything else, so those are my two things, that, thank you for allowing me to get them out early, so that we get enough people who will pick up on it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to governmental reports, we have our Select Board meeting calendar. Did everybody get to look at it?
Looks good to me. Looks good.
Yeah, looks good, just as I always say, but we always try to work with one another if we need to make changes, to make sure everybody, but hopefully, hopefully we won't, we don't usually have to make too many changes.
Not too many, but we're, we're good at helping each other out, so, and we'll move on to the budget calendar, which we'll hand over to you.
Thank you, so as you know, annually, the town sets its budget calendar, and it is that time again, so we just are asking you to approve this calendar, as you know, sometimes we do have to make small changes due to scheduling or timing, but this looks pretty well laid out to me, starting us with the capital improvement plan in September, and ending with town meeting on May 16th, 2023, so, thank you.
Thank you, we can move on now to new, new business, and I would like to take a motion to open a public hearing for the application from AT&amp;T for small cell wireless facility at 70 Elm Street.
Madam Chair, I'll move to open the public hearing for application from AT&amp;T small cell wireless facility at 70 Elm Street. Just a reminder, because we have one member who is remote, we do need to have roll calls.
So roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Can you, Rosemary and Dick move your microphones a little closer? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, much better, thank you. Janice Phillips, aye. Okay, public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience to?
Yes, we have the proponent before us.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my name is Edward Pare, it's P-A-R-E, I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, I'm here representing AT&amp;T this evening, on behalf of AT&amp;T, thank you for hearing our application, I've been before this board remotely, if I recall, we did seven of these small cell facilities, basically, we look for utility poles within the public right-of-way, when we have an opportunity to utilize existing structures, in this instance, we did find a utility pole near 70 Elm Street, we filed our application a few months ago, this was in the Machine Shop Village Neighborhood Conservation District, so we appeared before the commission recently, received our approval to alter the utility pole, so the work involves replacing the existing utility pole, we'll put a small antenna, as we have in the other locations, on top of the pole, it's a 24-inch antenna, and working with the district commission, rather than use the, our usual equipment cabinet attached to the utility pole, we took the equipment out of the equipment cabinet and placed it directly on the pole, at their suggestion, we did, our recommendation, we did provide the Select Board with revised plans, photo simulations pursuant to the recommendation of the commission, you should have those plans in front of you, I'd be happy to answer any questions, we supplied all of the information in a lengthy filing, dealing with how we comply with each of the standards for small cell facilities that the Select Board put in place, including that we'll comply with all codes, radio frequency emissions standards, et cetera, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you want any further detail that members of the Select Board would like.
Madam Chair, this application is in order, we're voting on 70 Elm Street today, and has gotten the approval of the Mechanics Village Commission as well.
Is there any of the public there to discuss the public hearing?
Madam Chair, no one else is coming forward.
And do any of my colleagues have questions?
I'm sorry, did you say, you're putting in a new poll?
Yeah, it's a replacement poll, so the existing poll, and the utility company does this frequently, when it's an older poll, they'll have us replace it as part of their make-ready work, so they get a brand-new poll, and it'll support the structural, structurally it'll support AT&amp;T's equipment that way, so it'd be a Class II pole, it's slightly higher, because we have to be, if you look at the plans, we have to be four feet away from the secondary power that is already on the pole, that's not our choice, that's the utility company.
Okay, and, oh, sorry, go ahead, I was just gonna ask, you're repl, you're gonna get rid of the old pole?
Yeah, yeah, it won't be a double pole, I run into that often.
And are there any guidebars?
Uh, there are no guidebars.
Do we need an application for that, do we need a hearing for that, or pole replacement doesn't need that?
That's a great question, and I don't believe we faced this before, with a small cell. We can look into it, they would own the pole, not us, it's not, it's not a new service, so I don't think so.
I could just tell you through the Commonwealth, typically, a pole replacement does not need a new granted location, because you've granted it, so the way the statute works, obviously, we're newer technology, but the way the statute works is that we can attach our wireless to poles, if they require replacement, then they would, you know, come in, as long as they're in the public right-of-way, they still own the pole, AT&amp;T doesn't own the pole, all of the existing wires get reattached to the replacement pole.
So, is the replacement pole, is it made out of wood?
It is, yes, it is.
Which would blend in better in Machine Shop Village than a big steel one?
It will, yes, it is made of wood, and the utility, it'll be like every other utility pole that, you know.
And so four feet higher, which is probably a good thing, because I would imagine, the lower it is, the more it's in the face of the property nearby, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's at the, let me just get a look at it.
I think I saw it in here.
Yeah, so the existing pole is 30 feet currently, the replacement pole will be 36 feet, the antenna with the bracket is about three feet taller, so the top of it will be at 37 feet, but the pole replacement itself will only be two feet. The antenna is rather, it's a two-foot antenna on top of the pole, and it's, it's a cylinder, so it's not a, it's not like one of our usual full array antennas where things stick off it, it'll, it'll just be attached and within the diameter.
Any further comments?
Madam Chair, I believe we may have a public comment, someone has raised their hand, ma'am, if you could just come up to the microphone and say your name and address, please?
Dagmar Schnendinger, 83 Elm Street, I just have a question, I haven't seen any drawings or anything, what this will look like, so, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm, I'm sitting next to the neighbor, I, these plans, and we had also submitted photo simulations to the Select Board, which I've just handed to the abutting property owner.
It's right in front of my living room window.
Well, it's gonna be sep, it's, it's out at the street, so it'll be located here.
Yeah, I know, I know, I see the two poles right now, so they are still both there, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Ms. Max Medili, aye.
Janice Phillips, aye. We're now out of public hearing, and we will move forward to making a motion, I'll take a motion to approve the application for, of AT&amp;T for small cell wireless facility at 70 Elm Street.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board approves the request of AT&amp;T, let me just get to the verbiage, for the small cell facility at 70 Elm Street.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
I have a second, thank you, roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Janice Phillips, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Moving on to item C, a request from AT&amp;T to extend the small cell wireless facility application from 190 Academy Road, this is an existing application, and they're just looking to extend that timeline, as far as I know, is that correct?
That's correct, we've done a few of these recently, this is still pending in front of the Historic Commission, all extended Historic District Commission, which they are still working with diligently.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Sorry, is this, that you're working with, using, you're working with the Historic Commission about certain poles, and which ones may be removed, or?
That, that's correct, so if I may, again, Ed Parey from Brown Rudnick, representing AT&amp;T, so we, we, we made two applications, this one and the one with the old center, the old center has some additional issues, we've been working with the commission there to try to see if we could find a different location at a different pole, we just need more time to flesh that out, again, these are not completely within our control, because the utility controls the pole, but we are, we are looking at a different location, once we've identified that and get it approved by the utility, we can come back to the commission and eventually come back to this board, hopefully with their positive recommendation on that alternative location.
And do we know if the utility has been approached about removing some of the poles that are inactive? Are there, there are poles that, no?
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, that's a little bit beyond our scope.
Yeah, okay, I could look into that, though.
Okay.
So, the purpose of the letter is to see, the FCC has a shot clock for pole replacements, they're 90 days, we want to make sure we stay on the right side of that shot clock, continue working with the town and the commission, so we are seeking to extend that shot clock to October 31st, that should give us time to get a yearene from the commission, and then come back before the Select Board.
Great, thank you for that explanation, any further comments? If not, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board approves the request from AT&amp;T to extend their small cell wireless facility application at 190 Academy Road until October 31st, 2022.
I'll second that.
Great, I have a motion and a second, a roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Janice Phillips, aye.
Thank you again, now we will say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to item D, which is approval of the ARPA funding requests, we, there's a whole bunch of information in our packets about this, and I also believe we have people in attendance tonight to, to talk to us about these projects.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so we do have some American Rescue Plan Act projects in front of you, we have the Assistant Town Manager slash manager of the ARPA funds here with us, Andrew Shapiro, as well as the four proponents of the projects, so if it pleases you, we'll just take them in order, starting with Andrew's project, which is the 25% rail trail design.
Perfect.
For the record, Andrew Shapiro, Director of Community and Economic Development, and really pleased to be providing information about some additional projects for you to be considered for ARPA funding, I will allow the other proponents of the other projects to speak to theirs, but I do want to thank the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager Lori Berzlaaf, and the Deputy Town Manager Dee Casey, as well as Lynn Savage, our Town Accountant, for their assistance in reviewing these projects, and working with us to put them before you prior to them getting here, so, for mine, it's, I'm asking for, we're asking for almost $26,000, exactly $25,940 for a next, a process in the development of design documents for Phase 1 of a rail trail, we've already completed a Phase 1, which was something called a project notification form that went to the, to Mastot, to be included in the, what's known as the Transportation Improvement Project Process, TIP, so essentially, what we're doing is, we're developing this design within the confines of the TIP process, with the hopes that eventually, when we have a fully developed design, or a, I guess, a 25% design, we'll be able to request funding from Mastot to complete the rail trail, and so we're a bit far off from getting that done, but the next phase is something called developing a project description, so it's basically taking the information we've developed so far, which is sort of getting a potential layout of a rail trail, which would run approximately 1.3 miles, starting from Osgood Street at the driveway of the high school, along an existing rail, former railbed right-of-way, that runs between Harkaway Road and the Trustees of Reservations property on the other end, and it's also currently a right-of-way used by National Grid, and it would extend all the way to around Stevens Street, cross over onto a ridge that's currently used as a right-of-way by National Grid, across, and across to Pleasant Street, and continue on to the intersection of Marble Ridge Road and Dale Street, and so all of it is very conceptual at this point, we have a lot of work to do as far as outreach and discussion with the Butters and people in the neighborhood who could be affected by the project, and that's part of why this next phase is so critical, because it enables us to continue the project description, work with the Butters, do community outreach, and continue working with Stan Tech, our chosen engineer on this project, so hopefully, when we get to the end of this process, which will take a little time, we'll have a very refined trail path that works for the Butters, that works for the community, and will allow us to move forward on a really, hopefully, well-used and utilized trail.
Are there any limitations on what the trail can be used for, and I do have a thought in mind, but I don't want to scare anybody by me saying.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't believe that any of the rail trails should be used for motorized vehicle use.
Bingo.
And the only, the only exception being, the only exception being is, we have to keep in mind, number one, that it's, a lot of the current configuration is along the National Grid right-of-way, so there might be an arrangement to allow National Grid to utilize certain motorized vehicles to access their equipment.
Oh, work-related.
Work-related.
Not pleasure-related.
Exactly, and, and of course, emergency vehicles, if, if need be, but no, otherwise, no personal vehicles could be used there, other than bicycles.
And, and that would be made very clear, because sometimes those ATVs.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, I think, you know, we'd have to lay out some, some ground rules for that, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
They're generally not allowed, right, on any of those trails?
You'd be surprised, people have to track them down often, because they don't know, and then, yeah.
Well, being allowed and, and doing it is two different things, right?
Yeah.
But we have so many trails throughout the town, anyway.
Yeah, and I mean.
They shouldn't be doing it to any of them.
They shouldn't be doing it to any of them.
The noise level can be really bad.
That's correct. So, yeah, this would be purely for bicycles, walkers, joggers, that type of thing.
So what will this trail connect on either end to, so it'd be a section of trail in the middle, going through the, with the neighborhoods that you spoke about, where does it connect on one end to the other?
So, on the side closer to the high school, we would seek to connect it sort of to the Mills-to-Hill Trail, and of course, we know that that runs all the way past the Mills area into the High Street area, and I guess right now, since you, you mentioned it, I'll try to plug another thing we're working on, which is trying to develop a connection to that, that would run from either Main Street or Sutton Street, you know, next to Sutton Pond or Osgood Pond, so that we could even create further trail connections, now that trail would not be a fully, you know, developed rail trail, per se, that could be like a stone dust path or something, a little lighter, on the other end, we do have a plan for Phase 2, and I'm kind of having a, I'm kind of drawing a blank on where exactly it would go, but the, the intent would be to have this run out toward Mike's Market, the new market out there?
Oh, on Midtown.
Midtown, Midtown Market, thank you, Stan, appreciate that, yeah, somewhere thereabouts, I think we look to terminate the trail system right about there. Blue Ridge Road, thank you.
Yeah, it's on the other side, in the back of the homes.
Correct, yeah, I mean, again, a lot of this takes time, and takes a lot of community outreach with Butters, people that would be proximate to the, the trail system, and we want to be respectful of their property, and, and, you know, everything that a trail like this brings, but we think in, in the whole, it's a great amenity for the town, creates more opportunities for people to get out on bikes, and, and to be out on their, on their feet, and get more physical activity, and to create more connections between different points of interest throughout town, we think it'll be a great amenity.
It would be nice if the Mills-to-Hill Trail, there's a gap in that trail where you, if you have a dog, you can't take him through the high school property, so if there was some way of connecting those two pieces of that trail, so you don't have to worry about crossing the high school.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a fair point, and we will look, we'll certainly look at that.
So, would these be made somewhat handicap accessible, especially for, like a motorized, motorized wheelchair would be an exception to an ATV?
So the, this portion of the rail trail that I'm discussing now, it would be handicap accessible, because it would require, in most instances, a 10-foot wide path that would be paved, so it would be accessible for people in a wheelchair, or other, you know, any sort of ADA accessibility sort of issue.
What a great thing for the people who are dependent on, you know, handicap equipment to get around, to just to be able to go for a roll, not a stroll, in the, in the woods and things like that, that is, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
So, once we get to the planning stage, you said we could get funding for the state for it, is there a guestimate on how much this, at the end of the day, costs?
I, I would not even, it's gonna be, you know, there's gonna, this is gonna cost a lot of money, there's no question about it, and we have a little bit of a ways to go to determine how much it would be, but I believe that this, what, the, the scope of work that I'm asking to fund through ARPA would get us to a point where we could develop at least a first draft construction estimate, so we would get to that point to understand what we'd be asking for, and what, what ends up happening is, you know, we would request that amount of funding through the TIP process, and then they could sort of set that aside ahead of time, it's kind of like a capital improvement project, where they, you know, plan ahead a few years ahead of time, and they say, okay, so in two years, you'll come back to us for that money, it's there, and then as the scope gets refined, and as the design gets refined, and that number changes, and that could be based on a number of factors, that number might increase along the way, but the good news is, because we're in this pipeline, it, it can give us a better shot at getting that funding, and even if we don't get the funding through Mastot, we'll have created a fully-developed design at some point, and so, worst-case scenario, we can just seek the funding elsewhere.
No, it's great, that you see surrounding communities doing it, I think it would be a great addition, it'd be nice if we could loop it in, I don't know, so you could kind of make a, do most of them just kind of go one way and back, or do you loop them, yeah, they just go one way?
Usually meet other communities somewhere.
Okay.
That's who you usually see.
So, that wouldn't come?
Well, you know, you know, when we were talking, when I was just saying just now about connecting the downtown area, like a Main Street or a Sutton Street, again, it wouldn't be all rail trail in the strict sense, with like a paved path, but there's potentials there to connect, like, say, to Lawrence MBTA Station, or on the other end, if there's this area Middleton that we can connect to, I mean, there's, there's things we can do, you know, every connection's a challenge, every phase of rail trail's a challenge, so we're just kind of going one at a time here, trying to figure out, okay, let's, how do, how do we get over the hump of getting this part done, and then, of course, the long-term vision would be to continue to develop additional connections.
No, I think it's great.
So Madam Chair, did you want to vote on these individually, or do you want us to explain them all, and then vote collectively?
I think we should vote individually, so, all right, so, I will take a motion.
I will move that the Select Board approves the, the request from Andrew Shapiro to use ARPA funding in the amount of $25,940 for the 25% rail trail design.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, a roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the next project is the Department of Public Works Sewer Pump Station Improvements, we have DPW Director Jim Stanford and Assistant Director John Bregazy here with us.
Thank you, Jim Stanford, Public Works Director.
John Bregazy, Assistant Director of Public Works.
So we're here before you, the request is actually $3.5 million of a $5 million, what we estimate of a $5 million sewer improvement project, back in 2020, we went ahead with a full analysis of all of our pump stations, we currently have 20, well, we have 23 right now, but as you know, we're working on the 24th one over in front of the Amazon site that'll allow sewer over in the Route 125 area, there's also another pump station to a development that will probably be coming forward at the next town meeting, so essentially, these pump stations allow sewage flow in areas that otherwise wouldn't, because of elevation, one of the things with the pump stations are- One of the things with the pump stations are there are a lot of operation and maintenance. They have a lot of moving parts with the pumps, so they break down. And the technology has changed with the pump systems themselves. So we've got, we've got before you seven pump stations, which is really the most critical. When we did the analysis, we didn't believe that we'd be able to fund $5 million all at once. We expected to get started. We wanted, we wanted to do a priority list. So we had them do a short, the consultant do a short-term and a long-term fix in upgrades, recommended upgrades. And then for, hopefully with future funding through the state revolving loan fund. With that said, I can turn it over to John. He can talk about some of the projects that we have within this request, one of which being removing one of the pump stations.
Thanks, Jim. So as indicated in the, and summarized in the memo, the funding that we're gonna be using this for, we'll start out with the engineering for all 23 pump stations, as identified in the evaluation done by our consultant. The state revolving fund doesn't allow us to use that for the engineering, so these funds will allow us to essentially have all the engineering done, so they're ready to go, so to speak, come construction time, all the engineering's done. And the specific pump stations that these funds will be used for, there's the Willow Pump Station. As Jim indicated, that's a pump station where the recommendation is to actually abandon and demolish this pump station and instead redirect the flow to another existing pump station, the Jasmine Pump Station. And the estimated cost for that project is $320,000. With that, since we're eliminating Willows and redirecting it to Jasmine, the Jasmine Pump Station will need to be upgraded. So with that, we're gonna convert that pump station to a submersible, install a gravity force main to accept the flow from the Willow Pump Station with an estimated cost of about $940,000. Dale Street Pump Station, that pump station, we're gonna convert to a submersible with raised electrical backboard. So essentially, a board where the electrical panel's gonna sit on right outside. And then a closure with a dry pit to avoid high groundwater issues, which can lead to having to treat groundwater, which we don't want to pay for that. That one was an estimated cost of $625,000. The Campbell Road Pump Station, we're gonna convert that pump station, abandon steel, dry pit, and update the motor starter on the electrical equipment. Estimated cost was $625,000 for that. Winter Street Pump Station, replace some corroded components, improve the ventilation, and upgrade the bypass pump. If for some reason one pump goes down, we have a bypass pump that we can utilize. And the estimated cost for that was $210,000. The Blue Ridge Pump Station, upgrade some isolation valves, and again, upgrading the bypass pump, at an estimated cost of $140,000. And Sailway Pump Station, replace the concrete slab and upgrade the auto dialer slash battery backup with an estimated cost of $40,000 for that pump station.
We would expect the engineering to, as soon as we have the funds available, we would start the engineering and it would continue through. I think the Willows is really the one we've actually been targeting for a long time. Anytime you can eliminate a pump station, we do think it's a really good thing, so.
Is that on the same side as the Willows tennis and?
Yes. Yep. Exactly.
Why is it a good thing to eliminate a pump station?
Because it's operation and maintenance cost. These pumps are running 24 hours a day. As you can imagine, there's a lot of wear and tear items on those.
Okay, so. And as you said earlier, especially if the pump is going uphill, it can be a fire problem as well, fire suppression problem. If the pump's not working well to get the water, am I talking about the right thing?
Well, actually, you're bringing up a good point. And that's really for the water booster stations, which we've done the same review with those. That's supplying water. This is actually taking the sewage. But it's the same concept, a lot of wear and tear, for sure.
Hopefully, we're not using this to put out fires.
Thank you. Thank you for politely correcting me.
So I think, just following up on that, I mean, obviously, these aren't things that people see every day. No, most of us don't even know they exist. But if they were to break down, we would know pretty quickly that we have a problem.
Yes.
So, you know, we commend you for, you know, keeping up with these and making sure they're all working properly. Has there been a study of how much, you know, potential savings we could get out of it? I mean, obviously, there's a lot of maintenance here. And like you said, you know, some of them, like Winter Street, needs some serious upgrades, it sounds like, and, you know, and renewals.
I think the savings on the electricity, I mean, you're probably talking $1,000 a year just in electricity cost. The real savings to us is, there's a lot of regulations out there. One of, one of the large regulations that we're under right now is to remove groundwater. It's called the inflow and infiltration from our sewer system. By doing these upgrades, we're actually gonna be killing two birds with one stone. And those are expensive projects. Whenever you remove water from the sewage treatment, you're saving funds as far as the treatment cost. So I don't think we've analyzed exactly how much that would save, but it's always a good thing when you remove water. Essentially, you're treating, we're sending to Great Alarm Sanitary District, clean water. That's why whenever you see heavy rainstorms, pumps get overwhelmed and there is a lot, and there's a, it's very expensive to treat sewage. And so when you're treating clean groundwater and clean runoff, it's very expensive. So there's quite a bit of savings as far as that goes.
Will this help the overflow that happens with the Magma?
Probably not. And the reason is, is the majority of the overflow is actually from combined sewer systems in some of the other communities. But we certainly will, we, anytime you can remove groundwater, it's gonna help. But really, those rain events are just, it's overwhelming to the system. They just can't pump it.
How long do you think it'll take?
Based on our history, I feel like investing in our infrastructure is always a wise decision. Any other comments? Sorry, I know somebody else was.
Sorry. No, I was just wondering how long you think it'll take to go through these projects?
We're hoping to do it in a couple of years. We'll see. One of the things right now with construction, I'm sure everybody understands, is that the cost and the availability of contractors and materials. Right now, we're going through this with the pump station over near the Amazon site. Essentially, the pump station, the emergency generator, they're all about a year lead time. So it, and, you know, in some ways, it's good, because it seems like some costs are coming down. In some ways, it's bad, because the longer you put it off, you know, the potential for cost increases. So, in fact, I think when we estimated in 2020, we were looking at about $3.5 million for the whole project. Now it's up around $5 million.
And, I mean, I think this totally hits the goals of the ARPA funding. I was just, so people remember, because this is a big number. We, how much money do we have in ARPA funding that we're?
Sure. So we started with, we have a handy chart that Andrew made us earlier today. We started with $9,125,590. At the end of the meeting tonight, if all the items are approved, we will still have $4,294,481 left.
Thank you.
So I guess the question is, why didn't we want to go for the full $5 million to get all the projects ticked off?
So we didn't shut the door on that, but we do, we still have applications coming in. And we also want to make sure that we are looking at projects and initiatives that benefit residents and benefit businesses directly. So once we kind of cycle all of those, we said we'd come back to them with the rest of it.
Well, I think this checks both those boxes.
Yeah.
Residents and businesses, obviously. I mean, like I said earlier, if this stuff fails, we all feel the pain from that.
I'm sorry. I mean, we would say that the critical ones are really the ones that we're attacking first. So we felt that that's where the priority was, and this actually addresses that.
We also have to spend this money by 2025. So we, just in our conversations, realistic about what we can do in two years and can't do in two years.
Is there money in the enterprise fund that we could look towards?
Yeah, there's retained earnings. That's what we looked, so we threw around whether or not we'd go for an SRF loan, which is usually either 1% financing through the state, or go to retained earnings, where it usually hovers around the $4 million point. So we certainly have other options for funding the remaining 1.5. The major thing, I think, is that's gonna be good, is getting the design done, because it's gonna give us a better idea of what those costs look like.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any other comments? Okay, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board to approve the request from Jim Stanford to use ARPA funding in the amount of $3.5 million for sewer pump station improvements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedeli, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Can I remind all of you to talk very close to your microphones for me?
Madam Chair, our next request is from Kathleen Keenan of the library for the bookmobile.
Is that a good spot for the microphone?
Can you hear Kathleen? Yeah.
First off, thank you always for the support that we get for the library. We're constantly looking for ways to do more. And one of the challenges is the space of the building. We have a beautiful building. It's a beautiful lot. But we're in the neighborhood, and we recognize we can't do any more with additions, for instance, there. And one of the things that's become much more obvious after the result of things like COVID is that people need to be out and about in different places, not in confined spaces. We've been watching other towns develop different types of bookmobiles and decided that might be the next best option for us. A few years ago, some of the library trustees and I have been talking about the possibilities of a branch of another building someplace in town. But buildings are expensive. I mean, you buy it, you build it, you gotta keep maintaining it. And a lot of times, in that type of a branch situation, you're duplicating what you have in the main space. So this seemed to be a much more reasonable approach to add more service in a much more economical way.
I will add that Kathleen and the library also just received an earmark from the state for a mobile site, basically like lockers, at some of our apartment complexes and affordable housing units, so that they can put books in there, almost like an Amazon locker. So we're excited about these new initiatives to bring the books to people instead of having them come to us all the time.
I included pictures. We were very fortunate. Just weeks before I had to finish this proposal, Watertown took delivery of their van. So I spent a Saturday with the library director, who ordered her van and waited six or eight months or so to get delivery. And then I spent the day with the librarian, who is now driving the van and going out. They had an arts festival, and so I was there when the van was parked at the arts festival for the day in Watertown and watched the people come up, amazed to see it, pleased to see it, asking questions. The van in Watertown is a full-functioning branch, so that you can get a car, renew a car, take out books, bring back books. The van itself works as a mobile Wi-Fi hotspot, so that you're bringing the antenna out to the neighborhood. The van designs are really very clever. My goal always is to spend the money the best possible way for the town, so that there's more money for yet more things to do. So that's my pitch for the van.
Yeah, this is actually a really good picture. And then the other picture is pretty much the inside. It's pretty efficient.
I was really impressed with what they had done. When you read about things on sales websites, the companies who are starting to do this, for years, these companies have been business, they've been in business, they've been customizing police vehicles or making vans. So if you went to National Night Out, they had a Ford Transit that's one of the mobile stations. I'm not sure if it's like an investigative unit station, but you get inside and you see the kind of customization. And so these companies have realized there's a new market, an area to expand into. And so they're bringing a lot of experience with customizing vehicles. They just haven't been putting in book carts and checkout stations, so. And those are pretty easy compared to police and fire station vehicles.
And the van will be driven by an existing employee? You don't have to hire someone else to drive the van?
We would like to. The difficulty with adding a van and not people is that if you take the people out to drive the van, then there's not enough people in the building to still take care of the people who come into the building. So the request here is to treat this as a pilot for staffing for two full-time positions for the first two years. I believe that at the end of the pilot, we will, you know, see the results that are worthwhile. And I know that adding positions is always expensive to the town. So we've been very fortunate. We have the funds to support OPEB, so I'm saving money. So two years from now, if they're regular positions on the rolls, then we're taking care of that part of the funding, that, looking into the long-term picture.
Oh, I see. Now you do have the staffing in there. I missed, I didn't scroll down far enough.
That's okay. And everybody wants to be the people that go out in the van. So I said, we'll probably let some people take turns. We won't just have one person who gets to go all the time. I've had a few people in town halls say they would be glad to volunteer to go out with us. One of the things that was really fun, going to the Watertown Arts Festival that day, was that they brought yoga mats, put them out on the grass, and then they were going to do an outdoor storytime. So.
Well, if you hang in here a little bit later, we will be discussing extending a program on the common on the yoga.
It's whatever you can imagine to do. It's, you know, getting the materials and the staff to the place. And then, depending on the environment, if there's nitrous grass, then, you know, there's your potential to have an outdoor storytime or some kind of games or something. And we're all focusing on having the kids be outside. Screens are wonderful, but we want to get them away from the screens as well. So we think this might be a way to help do that.
This is great, and I appreciate you looking to the two years from now. And, you know, so that we can sustain it and keep it as part of the community. Because I think, I agree, it will be a welcome addition.
I hate to start things that I can't keep going, because it's one of those things that you bring services forward. You hate to have to take them back, so.
That's very true.
Thank you. Any other comment? And I will take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the request from Kathleen Keenan to use ARPA funding in the amount of $480,000 for a library bookmobile van.
I'll second that.
In a second. I have a motion and a second. A roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valancourt, yes.
Rosemary Smedeli, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes.
Thank you very.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm the one that's walking away with a smile on her face.
And finally, we have youth center director.
The Lord can't wait to see it around town.
We have youth center director Rick Gorman, and he's requested for social-emotional support staff.
Thank you. Obviously, the pandemic has been tough on everybody in our community. Obviously, myself dealing with youth. We've seen an uptick in behaviors, sometimes bizarre behaviors, with everything that's going on. So we're one of the few youth organizations in the state that didn't close during the pandemic. And about two years ago, I was pretty outspoken that, you know, from a lot of research that I'm part of, that we're gonna be failing the impacts of the pandemic on our kids for a five-year period. Last year, we were back open with very limited restrictions, and it was our toughest year we've ever had. We also had the most kids we've ever had part of the youth center. And the reopening of the youth center today, we are over 60 kids more than we were last year at this time, and last year was our busiest year. So what we've been seeing is some real taxing behaviors on my existing full-time staff. We have a wonderful staff. They have been phenomenal during this whole period of time. I do believe, in speaking to the committee, that I do believe we've lost the full-time staff person in the last few months earlier than I thought we would, due to basically being burnt out. And I think that's across the board with my full-time staff. We're continuing to provide a high level of programs and services without stopping. And I am concerned that some of the behaviors we're seeing, we actually need a little bit more trained people to do that. At this point in time, myself and Asia Valdez are really the only ones trained to deal with a lot of the behavior issues. So what we're seeking is a two-year funding of a position to help deal with social-emotional issues with our kids. I met with, to be proactive, met with Assistant Superintendent Jim Mailey to discuss how this could be a collaborative effort in a way also. If people don't know, Asia Valdez, from my staff, works in the school department 10 hours a week, assisting at the high school and the middle school with some of. a week assisting at the high school and the middle school with some of the behavior issues that they are seeing along with the teams of people that they have working with them. We see this position as working probably 10 to 12 hours a week with the, the support teams at the high school so that we can see kind of this collaboration and this communication between the school department and the youth center, which through our memorandum of understanding a few years ago, has been a lifesaver. So last year, when kids were really acting up at the middle school or the high school, guidance counselors, assistants, principals would let us know what we were going to get a half hour later when they showed up at the youth center. So we see a real collaboration with that so we can maybe identify some of the kids that are having the biggest difficulty right now. By the way, this is, this isn't one specific group of kids. This is affecting all of our kids in North Andover and some differently than others. The main part of this position would be to work with us in the afternoons in addressing a lot of the behavior issues we're seeing. I'm not someone that wants to give up on kids and I tend to give kids more chances than probably anybody, but we are getting a situation right now that we've got to be a little tougher around that. And I think what we're looking to do is have some strategies in working with this person to kind of help my staff, my part-time staff, as well as obviously working directly with these kids. So I think this is a latest position to add to some great things we're doing at the youth center. We are asking for two years, but like you just heard Kathleen say, ultimately, I, I do believe we're going to be in a better place socially, emotionally, two years from now, but we've had a long-range plan right now to potentially add another position at the youth center in the next two to four years. And my hope would be this two-year funding would lead into that position, maybe continuing with an additional, so I will be continuing, like Kathleen, looking at additional funding to make sure that this is not just a two-year. It is exciting that this position could be two years, though. I think there's a lot of great work we could do in two years and I have to say it's absolutely needed.
Well, you don't have to convince me. I think, I always say that the youth center is one of our greatest assets. I see it with my own kids. What you guys do is amazing. I know you guys have worked hard, especially over the past two years, and I can appreciate the burnout that you're seeing. I think you need long, like, long-term, like, this is great for two years and I think you totally need it and I, I'd like to see it continue so that you can get that support for your staff because the kids love coming.
Well, Melissa and Dee, we have a long-range plan for the youth center with some possible expansion and with that staffing. So I see this as almost that bridge till we could get to that. But I don't want to minimize that the imperative of having someone skilled, a skilled person right now is really my number one priority and I'll worry about 2025 over the course of the next two years.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we've all been affected by COVID and I think we're going to see it come out in various ways.
Absolutely.
As we get back to whatever the new normal is. So I, I appreciate you being proactive and I love the collaboration with the schools because I think that that's really important.
I think that's actually going to be a key. It was brought up in our discussions with the in-town committee on this that, and I, I know the collaboration we have with Asia and the school helps the school and this is something that'll be something that the kids will get to know this person a little bit at the school as well as at the youth center.
Now, just so that, I'll get closer, just so that I understand it clearly, but so the person that we would be bringing on board would do a lot of training of our staff and so that it's, you know, we get the biggest bang for our buck.
We will be doing training with our staff, full-time and part-time. We will be doing, one thing I failed to talk about, we are really interested in doing parent workshops, which during this last two years, we feel a need to actually do a lot more. The school department in there have a parent resource group that's actually been revitalized now. We see that person working with that. We see the person, besides doing training, doing hands-on, working directly with the kids. So individual crisis intervention, information referral services this person will be involved with. I think when I looked at my staff at the end of the school year last year, I, I had a very defeated group that felt that a lot of their, you know, passion for kids was just not working. And in a lot of it, I mean, not everybody at the youth center has a psychology degree. So this is somebody that I think can come in and give me the much-needed, I mean, this was something that we designed as a staff is what we needed. And then when this money as a potential became available, it just fit into everything that we were thinking.
Yeah, and I think anybody who pays attention to what's on the news and the studies and things that are coming out, our kids, they need help. We'll get through it, but they do, they, they really do need help. They, it's been a tough few years. And then, of course, tough few years on the parents, which sometimes translates into awkward and uncomfortable situations at home, I'm sure, so.
I do want to reiterate, I'm not looking this as just a certain type of kid that we're dealing with. This is across the board. So we're dealing with.
Absolutely.
Kids that have moved to North Andover last year from the city of Lawrence, who are adjusting to North Andover, as well as somebody who lives out on the Middleton line, who's lived here their entire life, who has affluence and everything else. They're both dealing with a lot of the same things because of what's happened since 2020.
Yeah, no, I agree, so I guess as soon as we get started and get that training and get everybody in a, a good position to, to, to take on some of these problems with like these kids and their families.
Yeah, I mean, if, if approved tonight, I mean, one of our things that Dee and I were talking about with Kerry is, you know, getting this advertised, getting someone on board as fast as possible with the school year just starting.
Well, then you do what I do, you go to the chair and you say, can I speak before the Bavina gets too late? Anyways, good, good forum for you to be on.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, I can't, everything, I agree with everything that was said and just, you know, so folks know, you know, it seems like we're approving a lot of money tonight in a short period, but this, a lot of work has gone in to get to this point. There's been a lot of documents that have created, there's been a lot of, you know, evaluations that have been done, so it's not just kind of a willy-nilly, you have a, you get a new car, you get a new car. A lot of work has been done to get to this and we, you know, we really appreciate all of you that have put that work in here and, and brought these to us and with all the thought and, you know, it's, it's a great program that we have available to us and we're making good use of it. All of these, you know, are going to impact people in this town directly, so it's a great use for all of this money.
Thank you.
Thank you for being proactive in your committee and your staffs.
Thank you.
Anything we can do to help you support our youth is very, very important, so.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments or can I take a motion?
I would move approval on this article.
I'll second.
And I got a second? Sorry, I did not hear that.
I'm sorry, I had a second.
I got a motion in a second, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Deli, aye.
Janice Phillips, aye. Thank you very.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, item E is the request of Ashley Valancourt of the festival committee to extend the summer fitness series through September 30th. It's been ongoing all summer, it's very popular, people love it.
I would move approval.
I'll second it, but having spoken with Ashley today, that was supposed to be, she did want, amend that to October 31st as the end date.
I will take that as a friendly amendment.
It'll give me extra time to go. Yeah, I promised I was going to go.
Oh, was that going to be on the next meeting?
I think we're gonna.
Okay, so. Okay, so the next meeting is, we'll do it again.
So we're well aware, so I'm ready to. All right, no more comments, I would take a motion.
We have a motion.
We do, in a second.
In a second, and I'll retract my comments about the amendment.
I'll take a second?
I, I seconded it, but I'm going to retract my comments about the amendment, so we'll just, I'll stick with the September 30th date.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Deli, aye.
Janice Phillips, aye. Great, thank you. Okay, item F is the request of the North Andover Historical Society for a letter of support for the elevator project. I'm going to pass that over to our town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we do have representatives here from the historical society. What they're requesting today is a letter of support to the agricultural, architectural access board, I couldn't get that out, to support their request for a variance for their elevator, for their proposed elevator. That request has been supported by the Chair and Vice Chair of the North Andover Commission on Ability Assistance and they're simply requesting a letter be sent from this board supporting it as well.
Madam Chair, I would move approval for sending a letter of support.
Questions?
May I just ask why a variance is needed?
So they're not, it looks like James Witten would love to tell us. They're asked, they're requesting our Lula elevator instead of our full elevator, so it's like a.
Like a lift, kind of?
It's like a lift, yes, but.
All right, I'm good.
Right ahead.
First of all, if it's okay, I'd like to thank Melissa, Lori, Richard and Rosemary for supporting and the whole, the whole group for supporting the waving of the, the permit fee, which is very helpful. So, but this is the same project. So the next step that the director, Brian Howard, President Diane Huester and myself would like to get is the letter of support, it's actually very slightly different than, than you said, it's, it's if we have the select board's support, the disability commission's support and the building inspector's support, we don't need to get a variance from MAB. That's the, the way the code's written as we, as we understand it and the architect has explained it to us. So if, and it's, I think it's mainly driven by the accessibility board from their professional opinion, that this is the right scale of device for the small occupancy we have on the second floor of the building. So that's our hope to be able to get this in, get it through, get this built by the end of the year. And with any good luck, we'll, we'll be able to do that with, with this letter and of course with Paul, Paul Hutchins' loving support of us as well, so.
Thank you.
The only question I have, John, is there was a condition, I think, from the Commission on Ability Assistance about the wall or the corner that they wanted to see it somehow shaped.
Yes, that, I, I forgot about that. Yes, their letter and we actually, you'll see that, the picture of the wall, the corner, and it looks pretty sharp. And basically, the accessibility commission quickly noticed that, that we've defined the corner, the space meets code for the width. In fact, the architect just yesterday said the final number's looking at somewhere between 38 and 40 inches to get through. However, that still doesn't negate the fact that this is kind of a knuckle beater if you're trying to get out in a hurry because of the edge. So the architect also pointed out that we can buy and install and put it in, he'll put it in our plans, the stamped drawings, that we'll put a protective soft plastic rounded corner on that and we'll make sure that the inner edge, the elevator shaft, where you see this plate here at the bottom corner, that that will be angled in the directional travel with a soft edge, so. And I think we won't, we won't settle that until the disability commission representatives are happy with what we show them. And I'm sure the building inspector is going to be, is going to be the same. So I guess we, we'd ask for this letter of support, assuming also, just like they said, that the building inspector and the disability commission is happy with what we do with that corner. We don't, we don't want any skin knuckles, whether or not people are disabled.
Yeah, I think that's a good solution to put a soft corner on there instead of chipping away at that wall or that, that's not going to come out good. So I think that's a good solution. Yep, perfect.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Any other comments? I think, if not, I will take a motion. I think we already did one.
Oh, you have a motion, I'll second.
I'll take a second, okay.
And who, who will draft the letter?
Roll call vote.
Just a question, who will draft the letter, so Melissa?
Staff will draft, yes.
Okay.
Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Deli, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes. I'm actually getting kind of an echo, I'm wondering if we can do something on that end that might help?
Is it from any one of us in particular?
I can't.
Oh, can you try, I'm turning on my, I want to turn my mic off, see if it goes away.
I don't think it, I think it might need to be a cam thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill's typing.
Whatever that was, was a little better.
Okay, better?
It's a, yeah, that's a little better, thank you. Okay, moving on to item G, their vote to sign the MSBA initial compliance certification for the Kittredge School Project.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is the next step in our MSBA funding journey here is for us to sign our initial compliance certification. It is due by September 30th. It requires the Chair, the signature of the Chair of the Select Board as well as the Superintendent and the Chair of the School Committee. It's basically just certifying that we are in compliance with our application, that we are committed to the, the program.
Absolutely, we want to be full compliance.
And we want to be committed.
Yes, all good things, right? Well, then I will move that the select board sign the MSBA initial compliance certification for the Kittredge School Project.
I'll second that.
Great, and I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smith Deli, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye, thank you. Okay, moving on to item H.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The appointment of the members of the school building committee, I'm going to pass it over to our town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is the next step and this is due by October 30th. We will be appointing some members tonight and then some members at our October 4th meeting. The members that we're still currently waiting on, it's just the school committee members, there's a minimum of one and can be more, and we're working with the school committee chair on that currently. So tonight, we will be appointing the following people. It is a school building member who is MCPPO certified, so that means they're certified in 30B in purchasing, and that is Laurie Buraslaw. We will need to appoint one local chief executive officer, so that's a select board member. I'm sure we'll have a discussion about that in a moment. We need to appoint the town manager, so that is me. We need to appoint the superintendent of schools, Greg Gilligan. We need to appoint local officials responsible for building maintenance, and that is both Steve Foster and Jim Mailey, so we'll have two in that slot. We need to appoint a representative office authorized by law to construct school buildings, that again is me, so I will sit in two spots. We need to appoint the school principal, Richard Cushing. We are appointing a member knowledgeable in educational mission and function of facility, which is Diana Beckley, who is a teacher in the district and has kids at the Kittredge. We need to appoint a local budget official or member of local finance committee, and that is the Chair of the Finance Committee, Donovan O'Connell. We have two members of the community with architecture, engineering, or construction experience, that is Maureen Caldwell and Maureen Skakini. And then we have one other member who has served on school building committees before and is a very treasured local resident, she will fall under the other category and that is Eva Hamori.
Great, a long list and we're really lucky to have all of these people.
So it sounds like the only two that we need to decide is this member of the select board and then a member of the school committee.
Right, and we're going to leave the school committee one to our October 4th meeting, but the select board, we certainly should try to do tonight if possible.
Okay. I will take a motion.
A motion for the existing or for a member of the select board? Did you hear that?
I can't, I missed that.
So the question, the question, sorry.
Are you looking for a motion to accept the members that Melissa just outlined or are you looking for a motion for the, a member from the select board?
Still.
Let me try. Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, a little bit, yeah. It just got very echoing for me.
Okay, the question is whether you would like to discuss first?
Can I, can I call in?
Absolutely, yes.
I think we could, can we take a quick break and I'll call in?
Sure, we'll have a brief recess.
Janice doesn't live too far, she could just yell from the window, right?
Madam Town Manager, what was the first name of the Caldwell?
Kathleen Caldwell.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I, that's what I thought, but I didn't hear that correctly.
Uh-oh. That's scary. So, there we go, okay. Madam Chair, you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can, so we need you, I think we're going to have to leave the screen and just be on the call. Because now we're getting your echo.
Try that.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
No. I think you need to leave the call from your computer and just be on the phone, unfortunately.
If anybody's logged into the Google call here, you have to be completely muted?
I don't think any of us are.
Okay. Okay. And from the console?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it is. All right. No, she's coming in through a neck hole.
These are a lot of scary sounds.
I think if she just, like you said, if she just gets off of the Google screen, just stays on the phone, I'll text her. Or did somebody ever text her?
I did, I text her now.
Is that it?
Okay. I will be right back.
Janice, you still there?
We can, there we go. Can you hear us?
It really sounds quite funny that I can hear you.
Okay, we're not underwater, we promise. All right, so we'll return from a brief.
It's like underwater, it's like you're underwater.
So we're going to return from a brief, return from a brief recess, go back to the meeting.
I'm going to rejoin.
Now mute your home, your computer. Shut your, all your audio off and just use the camera. If you turn the audio off completely on the meet.
Okay, I have it.
It's amazing, we did this for two years.
How was that?
Try again.
Is that better?
Yes, perfect, we did it. Thank you.
Is that working?
It is, that's perfect.
So, it, but you all now sound like you're underwater.
Hmm.
My apologies, I don't.
That's okay. I think he's still working on it in the back room, because he's on the phone with Brian.
If you can just exit the meet again and try.
It's interesting.
The regular sound, maybe?
Yeah, maybe just go back to the computer, that sounded like at least you could hear us somewhat.
He's closing the meet. Okay.
Maybe she just calls in on her phone, and we just have it on audio.
Yeah, we can do that. She's in there.
The, the problem is, is our side of the room.
They can't hear, yeah.
We got to yell.
Try to hang up her phone, and just go back to her desk on the computer.
Okay.
I can't hear any of you, but I don't know if anyone's speaking.
We're not speaking now at all.
Oh, but that was much better.
Oh, good, okay. Progress.
That's much, much.
Good, okay. So where we were.
Can we proceed like this?
We can proceed like this.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
And my apologies, I don't know.
No, no, technology. So, no. So the discussion we were about to have was, is there a Select Board member that we want to add to this list of names tonight, and then do the appointment collectively?
Is there a Select Board member we want to add?
For the School Building Committee.
Laura is on the list, right?
Okay, so Laura's already on, okay, I didn't understand. Laura's already volunteered.
I'm more than happy to serve.
Okay.
But, yes, so is there a discussion about, is anyone else interested?
Madam Chair, I'm not hearing any other interest. So, I think we can move forward then with the appointment, unless there's any discussion on any of the appointees. I will just add that, the three appointments for the residents, as discussed, came from a discussion with the moderator.
Okay.
And thank you to everybody who has volunteered their time.
Yes. It'll be, and exciting, and a lengthy process, but.
It's a lengthy process, yeah.
Really looking forward to watching.
Yes.
So, if there is some more discussions, we'll definitely take a motion, which may have happened, but I missed it, I apologize.
No, it hasn't happened, but I'll make the motion. Move the Select Board in accordance with 963 CMR 2.0, appoint Laura Bates, Melissa Murphy Rodriguez, Laurie Burzloff, Greg Gilligan, Steve Foster, Jim Mealy, Richard Cushing, Devin O'Connell, Eva Hamori, Diana Beckley, Kathleen Caldwell, and Maureen Sakakini, to the School Building Committee for Kittredge School as assigned in letter, as assigned in letter to MSBA.
Okay, I'll take a second.
I'll second.
Great, I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedeli, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye.
Thank you.
Well, our next item of business is the appointment of a Select Board member to the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, with the vacancy, we currently have a vacancy on the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well. We typically have one Select Board member who serves on that committee.
I would move Richard Valancourt, if he's interested.
I would second that.
Okay, I, I would take that, yep.
Quick, before he can.
This is mine.
We all got to do our part.
We have a motion to take it, let's take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valancourt, yes.
Rosemary Smedeli, yes.
And Janice Phillips, yes. Thank you. Next item of business is to appoint licensing Chair, again.
Well, I am going to do Rosemary that courtesy then, since she was kind enough to call me, I will nominate Rosemary.
If you remember, remember during COVID, I had the papers all over, and I'm like, oh my God. Because it was new and innovative licensing regulations, it was, it was crazy times, but.
It won't be like that again.
Won't be, it won't be like that again, I'm sure, but it was crazy.
So I'll move the Select Board appointing Rosemary Connelly Smedeli as the licensing Chair.
I will second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valancourt, yes.
Rosemary Smedeli, yes.
Janice Phillips, yes. Great, thank you, well, teamwork. Item A, on our agenda, the discussion regarding the Select Board vacancy, so I will pass it over to the Town Manager, my biggest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a continuation of the discussion from our last meeting regarding the method on which we want to or don't want to fill the Select Board vacancy. At your request, we had done several different analysis of timelines on what a special election could look like. Unfortunately, they all take us to about two weeks before the March election. So, I think the discussion tonight is on whether or not there is any interest in filling the position, or whether the Board would like to continue on with a four-member Board until March.
Madam Chair, I think under, probably at least 95% of the time, this Board is in agreement, and I'm more than comfortable with just moving forward with the four members. I do think it can make for an awkward next election, in that it gives the person that gets appointed something of a leg up for a, just a robust election. So I would, I would suggest that, that we just move forward as we've been performing.
For the time being, okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we can function fine, maybe there's a little more work, as we just saw, you know, that we have to step up to a few more things, but I think as a Board, I think we can continue to work for the next four months, five months, as a four-person Board.
Yeah, if, yeah, with, I think, I think we'll be okay, working as four.
Okay, so, that being said, we can move on. If that's, if that's, if everybody's comfortable, we're moving forward. And so we'll move on to L, which is the Select Board's Year 24 Goals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So knowing that Chairman Phillips is not going to be here tonight, I recommended to her earlier today that perhaps we just go through the list of what the goals are, and that at our next meeting on October 4th, we determine who the Select Board leads are going to be, and do any updates to those deliverables. That stays in line with the budget calendar, so there's no concerns with doing that. But just so the public knows, the fiscal year 24 goals are as follows. To maintain fiscal discipline and AAA bond rating, collaborate, continued collaboration with the schools to determine capital and fiscal needs for the district, the continued revitalization of downtown, continuing to work with developers to mitigate burdens of large development according to the master plan, continue investment in the sidewalk maintenance and expand, expansion, expand plowing, pilot, start pilots with Merrimack College and Brooks College, and review pilot with North Andover Housing Authority, continued implementation of facilities master plan two, review and make progress towards 40B, continued collaboration with the Affordable Housing Trust, and explore accessory dwelling unit feasibility, inter municipal agreement for water, Route 114 improvement in economic development, expand the use and availability on renewable energy for municipal departments, develop a plan for use of the American Rescue Plan Act, and we'll be implementing that plan during the next ones, enforce a two-factor authentication, I can't speak tonight, I feel so, I can't get it up, we're going to skip the word, for accessing Gmail and VPN, thank you, with plans to expand to other systems, this has been a Monday, update all policies and procedures based on recommendations from the security audit, continue to expand cloud software applications, implementation of plan for 400 Great Pond Road, continue to invest in road paving, and we had update five-year plan, and then like the next day, I actually signed to the contract for the five-year plan, so we don't have, we can move that off, and it could be a limitation of that, improve relationship with Merrimack College, establish a tree planting replacement program, and address possible dead trees on town property, explore options for a dog park, continue to investigate areas for open space, invest in training, equipment, and staffing for departments, and explore sound barriers for Route 495. So I'll be asking the Board to email me only what Select Board leads they're interested in, so that I can start filing those in with kind of their priority list, and then we will revisit these at the October 4th meeting.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Item M is for us to set the date for the annual town meeting. If there's any discussion about that.
Do we have any dates that you recommend?
It will be, per the charter, on May 16th of 2023, and it will be here before we know it, everybody, so get ready.
We're already starting budget season.
I know, comes fast.
It's really fast.
I'll take a motion.
So that's a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
So it's pretty much in line with what we usually do?
Yes.
I would move approval, unless, you have checked calendars with the school department and?
I, but they usually are very well aware, because it's per charter when we have it, so I don't anticipate any issues.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there any way to coordinate with youth sports? I don't, what do other Toms do? I mean, parents are just spread thin, as far as, you know, do I bring my kid to soccer practice or drama club, and, or do I go to town meeting?
So I, we can send a letter to all of the, the different organizations, just letting them know that this is town meeting, and asking them to please end their practice by 7:00 PM that night. Can't guarantee they'll do it, but we can certainly request it.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good effort, you know, I've seen.
Education would be on that, and making sure that they're all aware of the timing, and we can start that now.
Absolutely.
And encourage that, I, I know that there have been times when youth sports have canceled because things on the, you know, the warrant were of interest. It can be done.
Well, hopefully we'll be implementing the field master plan, and so we'll have lots of interest, I hope, but.
Well, it certainly helps with parking and babysitting issues and all kinds of things.
Because if there's sports going on at the high school, the parking, yeah, I think it would be great.
Okay, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Yep, have them plan a different few.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so, there was an option, but I don't think they're interested.
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you, and I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valancourt, yes.
Rosemary Smedeli, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye. Thank you. All right. The next thing, it's item N, where we're going, a request from the Essex County Regional Lions Club to proclaim the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. They have sent us a great proclamation, and I would actually like to ask our Chair to read that. Our clerk, sorry.
Yeah, I, I know he meant, thank you. I do not see anybody here from the Lions Club, but we will read this proclamation for them. Whereas, "The American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids: Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas, one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas, founded nearly 30 years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetic Family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., and the Lions Club International are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids: Cancer Connection provided a variety of vital patient psycho-social services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Boston Children's Hospital, Tufts Children's Hospital, Shriners Children's, Boston, Dana Faber Children's Cancer Center, Mass General Hospital for Children, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids: Cancer Connection also sponsored toy distributions, Laughter Noon, Laughter is Healing, Positive Appearance Programs, Pet-Assisted Therapy, KCC Super Car Experience, Educational Programs, and Hospital Celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, the North Andover Select Board does hereby proclaim, the month of September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the town of North Andover, and urge all residents to take part in this observance. And with this, whereof, I here, hereunto set my hand and cause of seal of the town of North Andover to a fixed. of the town of North Andover to affix this 12th day of September in the year of 2022 and that will be signed by Janice and Phillips Chair."
Thank you, Rosemary. Without, if there is no discussion about this, I'd love to take a motion.
I'll move that the select board proclaims September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, so roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valencourt, yes?
Rosemary Smedelei, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye. Thank you all. Item O is our discussion regarding the town council position. I will pass it over once again to our town manager, Mr. Robby Getz.
Thank you. As the board knows, we have been working diligently to fill the town council position. We currently have a great applicant who has many, many years of experience and we've met with town staff and have heard that they really do appreciate having access of having in-house counsel. We also have a proposal from KP Law to serve as town counsel at a rate of $275 per hour with power legals billed at half that cost. And then specialty services at $330 an hour, $300 or $330 an hour depending on the type of service that they've been rendering. One of the things that I think we have recognized as we've gone through this process is that a hybrid option is often the best and it's something that we've looked on over the last couple of years where we've had in-house counsel, but we've also brought in specialty lawyers, whether it's from KP or Labor or even at one point, we had a specialized solar attorney. But that one municipal practitioner often can't be all things. I know I can't and so I don't expect that from town counsel either. And so, you know, that's, I think, what we're going to be recommending. We have run a cost analysis from 2010 through 2022, basically looking at what the cost of North Andover's annual legal expenses have been. And it honestly, it fluctuates depending on what we have going on, right? So when we have a lawsuit where we have witnesses and we're paying them or we have filing fees, you're going to see more than you would see in another year where we're not having that kind of action. So it really has fluctuated and can kind of be interestingly all over the place. So if you look back fiscal year 13 and 14 hovered around that $150,000 to $170,000 mark and fiscal year 20 was at the $160,000 mark. And so a lot of the time, it actually can be quite equitable. And so we don't want just that legal expense to be the deciding factor. So what we're recommending is that we we bring this one person forward at October 4th. You interview that party, we would work with you on questions, just like you did when you interviewed the fire chief or when you interviewed me. And then you could decide whether or not you want to make the recommendation and move forward or in the in the other instance to stay with KP Law, who's doing a great job for the next year.
What year did we go to in-house counsel?
So we believe that that was fiscal year 17-ish.
Sounds about right.
And you can kind of see where the administration and town legal fees got split out.
And the special education line is, is that the special counsel or is it special like?
No, that's, so that's counsel that we, special education attorneys that we use. And that's all, when you get to fiscal year 17 on this chart, that all kind of gets bulked into one amount because it didn't get broken out that way anymore. In fiscal year 15, we actually changed softwares. So we had to pull this from several different softwares, which was very exciting and a fun project for Lynn. But, which is why it reads a little bit differently when you look at it.
So what does the administration line represent and the town line represent then?
So the first two lines that you're seeing where it says administration, special education, those were the schools, those are the schools' legal fees.
Oh, okay.
The town line is the town portion of it.
And is that?
Oh, you're right, I am, sorry, it says the right, yes.
Is the town line inclusive of KP Law and our town counsel?
Yes. Includes everything except benefits. So from fiscal year 17 on, you could add about $21,000 a year.
And in those benefits, I'm saying this for the public so that, correct me if I don't say it right, the benefits are prorated with their prior employment. If it was in mass government field, I would fear it feels all that.
So the $21,000 worth of benefits is pretty standard. I mean, it includes mostly health insurance, which is around the $15,000 mark. And then medic, when we look at an employee, we kind of look at it as all-in. So it's also Medicaid, which is 2% of their salary, et cetera. So it's all the costs for them to be an employee here in the town. And that $21,000 number is an average we use for an employee that has one year of municipal experience versus 100 years of municipal experience. What we do when we bring a new employee on, a new position on, not a new employee, is we pay $11,000 per year towards OPEB for six years in order to cover that cost. We wouldn't do that in this instance because this position already exists.
Just, just to make it clear for the people at home who see that as an added cost versus hiring on a need-be basis. But you are correct in saying if the town's embroiled in some heavy-duty lawsuits, which can happen, the bill can just skyrocket.
It can. We were trying to remember what, so fiscal year 19 was a higher number. We were trying to figure out perhaps what had happened that year.
Was it Amazon negotiation?
So, no, because it was 19, so it was before I was here. So I'm thinking maybe it could have been Columbia Gas related. Yeah.
Could have been that, right.
Wonder if the marijuana facility was up that year?
Could have been a couple.
Might have been additional.
Yeah, that's true.
Worked to there.
So you're recommending from this point that you bring forward the candidate to our next meeting?
That's what we're recommending, yes.
To me, it makes sense to have in-house counsel from your recommendation and just from a, I don't know, it just seems to make sense to me that you guys have somebody to go to that's right down the hall and starts to develop a relationship and knows the town and the inner workings. And of course, we can always go outside for a special counsel. So I would be in agreement with that.
And I think it encourages department heads, town employees to speak to this person too, as opposed to having to pay or trying to go through KP Law.
Right, every time that you go to KP Law, you think about the cost, right? And so you start to become a little selective about what you are going to them for. And they have to go through you, which adds to your daily tasks.
The only thing that I worry about a little bit when it's, and it's just human nature. It doesn't speak to anybody in this room or who works for the town or whatever. When people become part of a team, they tend to want to please the people that they work with. We just need to make sure that they they please the taxpayers and the people of North Andover and what's a good legal move for the town of North Andover. It's just human nature. I've, I've been with outside counsel that got paid by the hour. We've had in-house counsel and you just have to be aware of that. Nobody wants to say no to the team on something that they're very excited in. But sometimes it could be a good legal reason or a cost-benefit reason for the town that we just want to make sure that they're upfront, that they explain everything and they realize who they truly work for. Not always just the team, but sometimes the team's all, all in, I mean, the entire team. And let's make this happen, that's fine too. But I do, it's just human nature. You're, you're part of a group and you want to get everybody on board and make this a big success. But sometimes it's like, we need to scrutinize this a little bit more. This might not be the best thing for the town, might not be the best decision. And that's, that's an important piece of it for me. I just want the best straightforward legal advice that we can get. And regardless of what some of the initiatives are, oh gee, we really want to do this. And it could be a good thing, but maybe it's just not financially beneficial to the town or whatever. But we just want a real straight shooter. This is the law, this is what we have to do, this is what you can't do, and there are ramifications. I just, we want the whole picture.
Having served as a city solicitor, I can tell you, you're often the wet paper towel in the room, unfortunately.
I'm sorry, what?
Having served as a city attorney, you're often the wet paper towel in the room. You're often the person to say, ah, hold on, this isn't right. And I do think that...
So you understand what I'm saying?
I do. So I do think that the person that we're going to bring forward, especially in the community in which she's coming from, has the capability to do that.
And I think the previous town council was that way as well. You gave a legal opinion, not a, not a popular opinion. And I think that's what you're giving, your legal opinion, not the popular opinion.
I mean, I worked for years with, with Tom Tormerbliss, who does work for the town of Andover and he's, don't get me wrong, I'm not pitching for him, he's very happy, I'm sure where he is. But boy, I would sit across the room from him and he would come right at me, you're wrong, this is what you need to do, this is... And not telling me what I wanted to hear. And I liked and respected that in him. And I think that's a good, healthy environment for all of us to embrace. Sometimes it'll be something that we're all excited about, make this happen, that's different than just give it to me straight. Where, where do we sit on this? How do we look in this? So I'm, it's a, I feel very strongly about that. It seems as though the numbers do seem to be in line with what, I was very concerned about benefits and all the costs of having the employee. It does seem that these numbers do seem to be in line with that. So it's just, and I think it's a good, whomever, if we do choose somebody, is to give them their marching orders. You tell us straight and then they're, they should be protected, they should be, okay? You know, show me where that says that, back it up with legal decisions and, all right, I see that you're right, that's what we do. Not like, well, let's twist and bend or whatever. And I'm not suggesting anybody did that, other than I'll tell you, nobody fought back harder than Tom Tormerbliss, saying, this is it, proved it, showed it and whatever. And he served us well, but that doesn't mean somebody in-house. I think these numbers, again, I'll say that again, do seem to be in line, they're not outrageous. They seem to be fair and reasonable.
Which is good to know. It's always nice to do the analysis and see that.
Are we seeing fiscal year 22 creep up because?
Yes. And also we had the Rex Pluggations.
And the Rex Pluggations.
Yeah, sometimes it's just bad luck that you've just got cases and you need to work. Or you've, you know, but the one thing that I have found in the past is you do want to bring, if you've got an environmental project, we want a really good environmental attorney because that's huge. There's a whole host of things that you want someone, I mean, years ago, we put together, I hate to spring this up, but the toughest adult entertainment regulations in the state, we brought in outside counsel that fought all the way up to the Supreme Court on freedom of speech. And we were served well by that. So it's...
Again, I think, you know, we, no one person can be the expert on everything in this. But there's certainly benefits of people having someone locally who they can speak with daily. I think it makes things go much more smoothly. So, and appreciate very much that the employees have indicated, and the staff have indicated they're preferring continuing forward.
Okay, so no actions needed and we'll bring you a candidate on October 4th.
Thank you very much.
October 3rd, Monday, October 3rd.
October 3rd.
Monday, October 3rd.
If we come on the 4th, you'll miss it.
Okay, thank you.
Item Q, to confirm the town manager's appointment of Jennifer Labor Day to the Board of Health.
Thank you. So this, this person has met with, with the Health Department as well as some Board of Health members. She is a public health nurse, which is very exciting. And so we're looking forward to having her join the team.
Great. Are there any other comments? If not, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to the Board of Select, the Select Board approve the appointment of Jennifer Labor Day to the Board of Health.
And I will second that, she does seem to be a very good candidate. We did have a couple of good candidates.
Great, I will take a roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valencourt, yes?
Rosemary Smedelei, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye. Thank you very much. Glad to have her on board. Item Q, approval of Community Compact Best Practices for Grant Application.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Laura's been working on this application. As you know, we have had Community Compact grants in the past. In order to qualify for the next one, you have to have finished the ones you've already done. We had three, we're now qualified to do two. We also got an IT grant last year from Community Compact as well. So this has been a very fruitful program for us. We are requesting to do two best practices. The first one is to conduct a community needs assessment to ascertain community buy-in and goals related to diversity, equity and inclusion. So they would be giving us grant funding, we've requested $40,000, they've agreed to $40,000, to have a consultant come in and work with our current stakeholders in order to kind of kickstart our diversity, equity and inclusion programming. They'd be working directly with Dee as well as her stakeholders in her committee as well. And we're really excited about this and we think it will be a huge help as we continue to do that important work. And the second one is to develop a bridge culvert preventative maintenance plan to help prolong the life of critical transportation assets. So as you know, we had requested an earmark for this in the capital bond bill, transportation bond bill. Unfortunately, that bill has not yet been funded. But this is a very important public safety project for us. And so they've agreed to $40,000 in funding for this project as well.
Great. Any comments?
So do we still need to apply or they've agreed to this already?
We've already applied, they have not approved our application yet, but we've gotten correspondence about the amount of funding.
Which is a good sign.
Yes. So we're very excited to move this forward.
Great.
Those really worthwhile for our community, so thank you. Okay.
And we just would ask for a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board to approve the following best practices to conduct the community needs assessment to ascertain community buy-in and goals related to diversity, equity and inclusion and to develop a bridge/culvert preventative maintenance plan to help prolong the life of these critical transportation assets.
I'll second.
Great, I have a motion in a second, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedelei, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes. Thank you for your work on that. Item R is to vote to add the fall ball coordinator as a special municipal employee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, in order for a town employee to be paid from two different departments or hold two different jobs, they need to be included on the special municipal employee list. Our fall ball coordinator has actually been hired by the school department as a full-time employee. So we're asking to add that position, fall ball coordinator, to the special municipal employee list.
What is the fall ball?
So fall ball.
That's my question.
Why do we have to have everything right? I feel like Dr. Seuss right now. The fall ball coordinator is actually the person who runs the entire fall ball program at the youth center. So it's the basketball program that they do.
So it's not a gala?
It's not a gala, although that would be fun. It's actually a basketball program.
And this person's run it for the last three years?
Yes.
They've worked hard.
So we just need to give them the designation as special municipal.
That's correct.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board add the fall ball coordinator position as a special municipal employee.
Second.
Great. Do I have a second?
I, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't do this.
Sorry. All right, so you have a motion in a second, I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valencourt, yes?
Rosemary Smedelei, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes. We know the kids love that program, looking forward to it. Item S is to sign the acceptance of the deed for 400 Great Pond Road.
This is very exciting. So this is the second to final step, I would say, on Great Pond Road. We are asking the Select Board to approve this quick claim deed and the closing is scheduled for September 14th. Yes.
Two days.
We're very excited. And so the plan is to have you approve the deed, to close on the 14th, to secure the property and then on your October 4th meeting, bring forward the committee that would help make a recommendation to the Select Board on the future use of the parcel as we agreed to do at town meeting. This is the standard deed, we've had a title search, came back fine and all the, all of the documents are in order.
So are you going to bring the committee to us at October?
Yes, that's the plan.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board sign the acceptance of deed, of the deed for 400 Great Pond Road as presented and authorized the town manager to sign all required closing documents.
I'll second.
Great, I have a motion in a second, I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valencourt, yes?
Rosemary Smedelei, aye.
Janice Phillips, yes. Great, looking forward to this being done. Item P... Item P is our appointment for tonight. Um, I, can we take the moment? What, can we talk about the moment? We're looking to appoint Kristen Perry to the Festival Committee, Abby Batataria to the Cultural Council, Alan Naffa to the Council on Aging, and Priscilla Reposo to the, as a Council on Aging Associate Member, so. Is there?
Yep, so, um, Dick and I have been working really hard on interviews. Um, we're so grateful to everybody in the town that wants to volunteer on all our committees. Um, so we're working through that list diligently, but we had a few to bring forward tonight. Um, first one was Kristen Perry, lifelong resident of North Andover, and she's very excited about being on the Festival Committee, and she came with, to us with some wonderful ideas. So I think that she will, um, add some great energy and new ideas to the Festival Committee, and, um, so that's our first appointment. Our second is Abai Barakari. Uh, hopefully I didn't butcher that too much. Um, again, very excited to join the Cultural Council. In his work, he brought, he had some great ideas about different events that he could, um, bring to the town and to the Cultural Council. He's in digital marketing, I believe he runs his own business, so he had some great, um, ideas that he thought could come to the town. Um, so he'll be another wonderful addition. And then we have two appointments to the Council on Aging. Um, Alan Nafet, Nafa.
And Nafta.
Nafta?
Nafa.
Nafa, thank you. Uh, so he is retired. He already volunteers his time at the Senior Center and participates. He does 45s, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
He runs the 45s with the, he had, one woman's 100 years old, I think, that he does.
Yeah, he plays with, yeah.
Yeah, so he is very excited about the new Senior Center and bringing more people to the center, um, younger, a younger frag.
He has a great idea how to bring in more folks to the Senior Center.
And it sounds like he knows a lot of his frie-, he has a lot of friends in town that he really wants to get involved into.
And he's just got a great personality.
He really does.
An engaging person.
Yes. Um, so I think that he'll be another wonderful asset to that committee, um, our council. And then we had Priscilla Reposo, um, who is a retired public health nurse. Um, and she is a wonderful artist, uh, and she's looking to get more, um, involved in the Council on Aging, and finding out what they do and what they have, um, to offer, and to add her skills and her skill set to that council. Um, both of those have, Priscilla and Alan have met with the Chair of Council on Aging, and they were also on board with their appointment.
Madam Chair, I would move approval on this list.
Should we add all the dates for all of them?
The dates.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Uh, if I could amend that.
Yep, that's fine.
Motion. Uh, so move, um, for Kristen Perry to the Festival Committee for her term ending June 30th, 2023. Um, for Abby Bacherai, Bacheraya, uh, for a term ending to the Cultural Council, for a term ending June 30th, 2024. For Al Naffa, for a term ending June 30th, 2025, for Council on Aging. And for Priscilla Reposo, as an associate member on Council on Aging, for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Great. Do I have a motion in a second? Then I would take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Ms. Maris Medili, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye. Thank you for your hard work. You guys have been very busy. I appreciate it. We are moving on to our license thing tonight. So Rosemary, we're gonna throw you right in.
I'm jumping in, I guess.
Madam Chair, we open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second.
Great, I have a motion in a second. I'll take a roll call vote, and Dick, can you adjourn your microphone?
Sure.
Laura Bates, yes.
Thank you.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
Ms. Maris Medili, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes. We are in the.
Okay, we are now in licensing. Bear with me a little bit. This is, I just wasn't quite prepared for this, but that's okay. It's like riding a bike. Um, okay, so the first item is, um, one-day liquor license. Um, this is an application from Paul Galant on behalf of Merrimack College. One-day wine and malt liquor license. The event is a ribbon-cutting reception to be held on September 22nd from 5:30 to 8:30. So outstanding items include certificate of occupancy, none for the fire department, police detail required on-site, Board of Health, none, and the first one was, um, uh, none for the, well, the building, um, the police detail required. I think I've got them all. So, anybody have any questions or concerns about this?
Yeah, so why do they need to come to us again? I thought we had, is this one that was scheduled before they got their license, a situation like that again?
Yes, although I have a call in, we're gonna, we were talking about this this morning, that we're gonna call over to them to see why they're, um, to see why we keep getting the applications. We're assuming that's why, because that's what the first ones, we were told the first ones were. Um, but I'm wondering if perhaps they have other people maybe running events in their tent rather than...
So just, she skipped the first one. She talked about Merrimack.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about, um, okay. I apologize. All right, so for Merrimack.
I apologize. I just read them as they were in my.
They're having this event off-site, uh, not in one of the buildings that are included in their regular license.
This is across the street.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's a new building.
The new building. And we are requiring a police detail, correct?
And we are requiring a police detail.
They would need it for that.
That, yeah, that's a tough intersection.
Okay, anybody have any more questions?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval for the Merrimack, for the license request at Merrimack College for one-day wine and malt liquor license on September 22nd, 2022, from 5:30 to 8:30 for a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the New Engineering School.
Um, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second.
Subject to the, just, I just want to add subject to the conditions, including the occupancy permit.
Yes.
As well as the.
And the police detail, yes, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, so motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Oh, so I have to do a roll call?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, I forgot.
Yeah, that's okay.
Um, roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
Ms. Maris Medili, yes. Unanimous vote.
Janice Phillips, yes.
Oh, I'm really cutting to the chase. I've, I've included you, Janice, now. So you're, you're. Okay.
And then we're just gonna skip back to item A, because we think we missed it, which was the application from Deborah Ingles for butlers and bars for the one-day all liquor license on October 6th.
That's the next one, right?
That was the first one. I think we skipped it by accident, went to Merrimack College, yeah.
We did, it was in the pile differently.
You're good.
Um, okay, so.
So this application is also, um, in order.
Okay, so this is, this is, this is fine for the butlers and, okay.
Yes.
If, I didn't skip further down. I'm looking at my agenda, and I'm trying to find it, but.
Nope, you're good.
Okay.
So this was the butlers and bars. Um, the application is in order, there's no conditions at all, um...
And it says, uh, an event for, is a staff appreciation to be held on October 6th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., including the, is a letter requesting the police detail to be waived.
Yes, and then, um, in the conditions, they don't require the detail.
This doesn't, okay. So, any, any questions? Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval for an all liquor license on October 6th, 2022, from 4:00 to 8:00 in the tent at Smolak Farms, and waiving the police detail.
Did, uh, just one question. Did you say you, you never finished what you were saying?
Yeah, so, sorry, as I got confused. Um, we, we're gonna reach out to them to see why we're still getting the applications, because it's a little bit weird.
I'm both of them.
So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. And I would second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Uh, roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Ms. Maris Medili, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes.
And then, Madam Chair, for item C, the application from Colleen Hamilton for the trustees, they actually emailed us to let us know they're only going to be needing the September 24th date, not September 25th date. Slight amendment to that. Uh, so we're just acting on 24th, and the application is in order. The police are requiring a detail for this one.
Okay, so, Colleen Hamilton, on behalf of the trustees, a reservation for a one-day wine and malt. The event is a fall festival to be held on September 24th, 11:00 to 3:00. And included in the letter is requesting the police detail to be waived. Um, yeah, but the police have said the police detail is required.
Correct.
Okay, any further discussions, questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Roll call vote.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm making a, I'm making a motion. Yeah, for, to approve the application of Colleen Hamilton, of the trustees' reservation for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for a fall festival at Stevens School, is placed on September 24th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., including the police detail.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Ms. Maris Medili, aye. Unanimous.
And Janice Phillips, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes.
I'm sorry, Janice, I don't see you across from me, and I keep forgetting to look up. Um, that is a unanimous vote.
All right, I'll stop it.
Madam Chair, I'll move that the Select Board closed the meet, meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Motion made, we have a second.
I'll second.
So motion made and seconded, um, all those in favor, say aye. Roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Ms. Maris Medili, aye. We are now out of licensing.
Janice Phillips, yes.
I'm gonna just keep doing it.
We have a little bit of a delay.
Yeah, with me. Um, thank you for, thank you for speaking up. Um, okay, so that is a unanimous vote. I'm looking for your picture over here, and it's like in this little thing. Um, so, okay, so we are now out of licensing. Thank God.
All right, we're out of licensing. There were a bunch of consent items. One item tonight to accept the donation in the amount of $25,200 from Minco Development for the Senior Center perimeter wall. No discussion, I'll take the one. Oh, sound is going again, so.
Um, Madam Chair, I'll move that the Select Board accept the donation from Minco Development for the Senior Center perimeter, perimeter wall.
I'll second that.
Great, I have a motion in a second. I'll take a roll call vote.
Uh, can we just have a little bit more of an explanation?
Sure, so, um, Minco is actually donating $25,200 for the cladding on the wall, what, 900 feet? Did I make that up? 900 square feet of wall space. Um, we had agreed upon that early in the process of designing the project. Um, and we're very thankful to Minco for their generous donation. Okay.
Can I just, I have one more thing?
You're welcome to, if you'd like to. Come on up.
You've been here all night, but I'll just add this. We wanted to make the wall all look uniform between our wall and theirs, so they offered to help pay for that.
Oh, pretty it up. Okay, nice.
Just judging my lips.
Are we, are we in a heart?
No, no, judging my back a little sore.
It, it, for people who are at home, it's really hot in here.
Very hot, yeah.
79.1.
Oh, is it? Yes.
It's tropical.
We're coming to 79.1 degrees in this room right now.
California room temperatures.
Yeah, very.
Yep, we're getting a palm tree for the next meeting, I think.
Perfect.
So. All right, so motion on the consent calendar.
Do we have that? I can't remember.
We have a motion in a second, I think.
There's a motion in a second.
Okay.
So I'll take a roll call vote.
Uh, Laura Bates, yes.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
Ms. Maris Medili, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm kidding.
Yep.
We're moving on to the schedule of minutes. Um, we need to approve the open session minutes of August 15th and the open session minutes of August 17th. Does anyone have any changes or questions or comments?
Um, I don't, I would move approval of the, um, open session minutes of August 15th and August 27th, 2022, as presented.
August 15th and August 17th.
Oh, what did I say, 15?
27, it's okay, you're moving us along.
That's fine.
We're all suffering from heat fog and upbringable heat fog.[1441.91]
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valencourt, yes?
Ms. Maris Medili, aye.
And Janice Phillips, aye, thank you, a very old business.
No old business, Madam Chair.
Okay, town managers report.
Sure, just a reminder that Town Hall will be closed tomorrow from noon to 1:00 for employee appreciation. I'd like to thank Matt Davis and the Fire Department for the amazing 9/11 ceremony that I saw all of you at. Hazardous Waste Day is Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 to 1:00, and we just want to recognize and thank the town clerk and her amazing team for another successful election. They did a fabulous job.
Madam Chair, if I may, so next week, September 19th.
I can't hear Dee at all, but.
Pouring.
If I could just say a few words, so next week, September 19th, Melissa and I will be at the International City County Managers Association, Laurie and I co-nominated her for a Trailblazer Award. There are only 10 women selected, both nationally and internationally, for this recognition, and Melissa is one of the top 10, so we will find out next week if she gets this award.
Exciting.
We are very proud.
That's awesome.
Very thankful and excited, so.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, Dee and I are going to Ohio.
Ooh.
Yep.
Couldn't have picked somewhere else.
So, it's very exciting and I'm very thankful.
Very exciting.
Anything in your heart to keep us posted?
I think we will, we'll have to keep her posted, oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, any selected updates or comments?
Couple things, I got a request at the last minute, and with the help of our wonderful town assistant, Jillian, we put together quick a proclamation, there is a Mulcahy couple that are at Brightview who celebrated 70 years of marriage, and they were just, it was just lovely, and it was just, they're still, they're still big time in love, it was very, very sweet. And one last thing, kind of ties into the town a little bit, but not really, of course, we all know that the town was not founded, but 1642, the Barker family came, and at that time, this town was part of England, so speaking of wonderful women, I'd just like to say that our condolences go out to anybody in town who hails from Great Britain, and we're very sorry for the loss of, what a tremendous lady, I mean, when you think about all that she's done, and she, after, after the Revolutionary War, we kind of made up, and she's always been a very devoted friend to the people of the United States, so our condolences to people in town who, who hail from or have connections to Great Britain, we all do, and with the support that she has given us, especially after times of 9/11, the Queen was all in for the people of the United States, so, again, with great sadness and devotion to quite a wonderful lady.
Anyone else? I will, our next meeting will be October 3rd at 7:00 p.m., and hopefully in our full state, but to be determined.
The elevator is fixed, we're happy to announce, the elevator is fixed.
Okay, and in the meantime, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second?
I have a motion in a second, I'll take a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, yes?
Richard Valencourt, yes?
Ms. Maris Medili, aye.
And Janice Phillips, yes, thanks a lot.
Good night.
Good night.